And welcome to this regular session of the Grant County Council. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor with the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Scott. If you would stand.
Would you bow your head and pray with me? Heavenly Father, we just pray that you'll bring over us what feels like a new wave of optimism in this country, which I attribute that to you more than politics, Father. Give us discernment and good judgment, bless our public servants here and across the world as we do the people's business tonight. It's in your son's name that I pray, for his sake, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will please do the roll call.
Scott.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Perez.
Not really, Mr. Perez.
Polling.
I did actually speak to Mr. Polling earlier today. He apologized, he got sick, he was under the weather, so he wanted me to extend his apologies.
Lemming.
Here.
Middlesworth.
Here.
We do have the call. First item, it is the auditor's report.
At your table, you do have the general fund balance. Ending of November 30th, you also have with that the Form 22 for the full settlement, which shows the distribution through each of the individual funds. We also have the insurance balance as of November 30th. Any other questions?
The DLGF did approve our budgets, right?
Yes, we've also received our 1782 notices. That is correct.
Are there any questions or comments from the members regarding the auditor's report? There are no questions. We'll move on to the first item under new business. However, I want to add an item under new business, item L, Grant County Health, the Department Board Appointment. And first item under new business, item A, Economic Growth Council. Chuck Binkler could be here this evening, he could not be here this evening due to some family issues, and so he was going to request that Kristi Polley be here this evening to give us an update. Is she here this evening? Since I'm not seeing her step forward this evening, we'll skip and may come back to that later. So the first item under new business, item B, Grant County Commissioners, Rob Stewart, with the transfers of appropriation. If we could, just go ahead and do a blanket transfer of appropriations. The auditor and I both looked over the transfers, and I think we're in agreeance with those, so I'd entertain a motion to approve all the transfers. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Hicks, to approve all the transfers within the Grant County Commissioners, the Grant County Sheriff, the Grant County Prosecutor, the Grant County Highway, Grant County Recorder, the Grant County EMS, the Grant County Treasurer, the Grant County Assessor, the Grant County Coroner, as well as the Grant County Auditor. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
If there's any department heads or elected officials that were here wanting to talk about their transfers, or wanting to say any words to the members, we'd allow that, but it's not necessary, your transfers have been approved. Yeah, do you want to come?
I first wanted to formally thank the council for pay raises that they gave my deputies. I know that's not on legit tonight, but publicly ask for it, and I want to publicly say thank you. The second thing with respect to the transfer prosecutor's office, I talked to Ms. Travis, and the issue that we have is all of our salary comes out of one fund, but we have income coming into two funds next year. My desire will be to actually allocate salaries from both funds to make this unnecessary. So, but again, thank you for your help.
Appreciate it. So we'll move on to item L, under new business, the Health Board Appointment. At your table this evening, you should have received the email from Tara Streep regarding the Health Board Appointment, and it lists effective July the 1st, 2023, the local health board appointments and their qualifications. Currently, our Health Board Appointment is Kathy Glickfield, and she's willing to serve in this role continually, starting January the 1st, 2025, to December the 31st, 2028. However, I failed to get this email reviewed in a timely fashion, so we did not advertise this as a body. So my recommendation to the body would be to go ahead and advertise it like we have been doing in the Chronicle Tribune, as well as the county website, list these qualifications. But if we could go ahead and approve her, that if anything should come up, I believe their first meeting in January, the Health Board is January the 27th, so that is after the first Commissioners, or first Council, County Council meeting, can't talk tonight. But if anything should arise within the Health Department, I'd like to have her be able to fill in that spot, so I think we could have a motion to continue to keep her appointed to that board until January the 27th, so that way we can give time to advertise it.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Scott, to appoint Kathy Glickfield to the Health Board till January the 27th, and we'll advertise the position and approve it at the next County Council Meeting, which would be the third Wednesday in January. Are there any questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Do you have everything you need, Angie?
I'm sorry?
Do you have everything you need for that?
I was just talking to David about that.
We'll circle back, is Kristi Polley here? We'll move on to old business. Wow, that was quick. First item under old business, Grant County Sheriff Dale Garcia with Salary Ordinance Amendment within the General Fund. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, Member of the Council. Thank you for keeping this important matter on the agenda, for your willingness to consider this request. I appreciate the opportunity to address any concerns that you may have, and I do my best to provide any clarity tonight. As you know, Grant County is home to a population of 66,674 people, and we share a border with nine neighboring counties, which is more than any other county in Indiana. Our county is a unique tapestry of three cities, seven towns, each contributing to the strength and character of our community. I firmly believe that the success of Grant County as a whole depends on the strength of each individual city and town, and that strength is rooted in unity. I believe that when we work together, we all benefit. As you were aware of, I was approached by Mayor Goins of Jonesboro with the request for assistance in providing police services to the city of Jonesboro. This is not a new challenge, as you are aware, that when Jonesboro has no law enforcement coverage, our deputies step in to ensure the safety of its citizens. While we're proud to serve in this capacity, it places an additional burden on our limited resources and takes deputies away from other areas of the county. Mayor Goins and the city of Jonesboro recognize this challenge and have offered to fully fund the addition of deputies to ensure consistent and reliable police services. This collaboration will allow us to better serve not only Jonesboro, but the entire county by ensuring that our existing resources remain appropriately allocated. I'm reminded of the wisdom of Ecclesiastes 4:9 and 10, which says, "Two are better than one because they have a good return for their labor. If either of them falls down, one can help the other up." This verse reflects the power of partnership and the strength that comes from supporting one another. By working together, we can address this need in Jonesboro in a way that benefits the entire county. This is more than a proposal, it's an opportunity to demonstrate what we can achieve, and we can come together to support one another. Strengthening Jonesboro means we're strengthening Grant County, and I am confident that this initiative will contribute to the long-term safety and success of our community, and I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. I know it's been on the agenda the last two months, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys or concerns that you may have.
Are there any questions from the members?
So currently, the deputies do cover Jonesboro, right?
If they have no one on duty, yes, we do cover them.
You described it as districts or zones.
Correct. Yeah, our county, we break up into different zones or districts, what we call them. Now, we don't, obviously, we don't patrol Marion regularly, Gas City, or Jonesboro, when they have their own coverage. We focus on the county, so our deputies are assigned to these districts to patrol the areas where no one's patrolling. But that doesn't mean we don't come in, come Marion or Gas City. What this will do, it will give us additional personnel to not only patrol the current areas that we're patrolling, but will also add Jonesboro as an area that we patrol more often.
So would the map or the districts change any, or would you?
No, that would just be part of the central, our center district, central district.
Are there any other questions or comments from the members regarding Jonesboro's requests?
Yeah, I've talked about this till I'm blue in the face, and we're trying not to repeat myself. I didn't want to read part of an email from a constituent that I received. I'm not going to reveal his or her name, but this is how the email read in part. "Hi, Mike, I just had a chance to watch the November 20th council meeting. I just don't get it. The brief in disrespect they gave Judge McPickard and the ridiculous argument against the Jonesboro sheriff proposal. This is extra funds for a job the department is already doing. I just don't understand them turning their nose up at that. Jonesboro would be paying for two more officers for the county, and the soft expenses are just that, miniscule. I just cannot wrap my head around how stupid that argument is. Mike, don't you feel like putting your head through the table?" I'll leave it at that. And no, I don't feel like putting my head through the table. I do appreciate the other council members' views, and I always celebrate democracy, and Sheriff, I know you do as well. But it's a little frustrating. Again, Jonesboro is stepping up to pay the most substantial part of the costs of adding these deputies, and it's paying for services we're going to get anyway from the sheriff. I mean, why we as a fiscal body would not accept that payment is beyond me. I'm going to be making a motion to approve this shortly, and I'm going to add to the motion something that has come up. As part of the motion, I'm going to recommend that we run this by the Sheriff's Department Committee, the Union Committee, and let them know that this is coming and that they understand that this is contingent on Jonesboro continuing to pay these costs, and make sure they're okay with that. And so that would open up just a part of the agreement with the unions. I understand it, just to discuss that one part and to make everything kosher. And I just think it's, I kind of agree with my constituents' email, it just doesn't make sense to me why we would not accept that. We're going to do it anyway, hence the bulk of the cost, why not? Now, I know there's been some concerns about, you know, other communities piling on and asking for, and I've said, so what? If they pay as they go, why not add more police officers and make this the kind of partnership the sheriff has discussed? And I would, as part of the motion, I'm going to suggest that if Jonesboro quits paying, we stop it, and the union will know right up front that if that ends, then those two deputies we're adding are subject to being terminated, in theory. So everybody would be going into this with their eyes wide open and transparent. And I think we're entering a new age of innovation, and I think this is worth trying. If it doesn't work in a couple of years, we can stop it, but I think it's worth trying. I know Jonesboro, in anticipation of this going through and not imagining that there would be any opposition to it, has not been taking applications, but they weren't getting applications for police officers anyway from anybody, but it was allowed to have more than one bullet with them at a time, to be quite honest. The quality of the candidates was not good, and we talked, I talked about how you get applicants that are gypsies, that go from department to department, that have no business being a police officer in Grant County. So there's reasons, and this innuendo that was raised that Jonesboro was not trying to hire police officers is absolute malarkey. And anybody who said that or took that position has obviously not attended the city council meetings, because they would have heard all the efforts that were made to hire police officers. So I would just recommend to this body, I hope that when my motion is made, I get a second, and this gets a fair up and down vote, and I would encourage anybody, I'm assuming members of the public would be given a chance to speak, and anybody who'd like to speak for or against it, I would encourage to take the podium and speak out, because if I'm off base, I'd like to hear it from the public.
Well, I think it's a lot, I mean, I think that we had our meeting, and it's a lot deeper than just the basis of what's out there. I think the union contract and, I mean, you're paying for some of it, private care type of thing, or specialty coverage, but if you continue to do that, I just, I just don't know that, I think you're setting yourself up for failures. When I first started on this council several years ago, we started eliminating things like this, that was like live streaming and all those type of things. I just think you got to be really careful in that, and I don't think that it's going to pay for everything, I really don't. And I think if you're saying, well, we're going to give you special care, then are we setting ourselves up for a lawsuit later on on the other side of the county, because we don't have enough people over there now? I just think that you're, I just, I struggle with it, Mike, I really do, and Jonesboro as a town or city, they've asked for money in the last 18 months, that this county has given them money for different things, quite a bit of money, actually, and I just really struggle that that's going to work. I mean, I know what you're saying about trying it for two years and seeing, and it's just, it's an opinion, obviously, it's the opposite of what you're presenting. I just think that, I struggle with it, because Gas City's so close, our county's already got districts set up, we're already patrolling over there. In my mind, use the money for something else in Jonesboro then, if that's the case. I just think that it's kind of crazy to offer it that way. I mean, if I was on the town or the city board, that's what I'd be looking at, can we do something different? I mean, it's my opinion, obviously, I'm one of what's left of this five here today.
Can I address something as the mayor of Jonesboro? May I?
Are you closing our own before you do that, or?
Let's just leave, just hold on a minute. Is there any other comments or questions from the members?
Well, I think one thing that needs to be addressed is the liability issue. I know that there's some concerns out there about the county assuming liability when offering services in a capacity like this, and I think that it opens up. We have deputies in similar positions outside of their duties, and I think we need to take a look at that potential liability as well. And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and I think in light of it, it's opened up our eyes that we may have other potential problems down there that we have never, ever considered or thought of, and what does that look like? What are we exposing ourselves to from a liability standpoint? I don't know what that answer is, you know, yet, on what exactly that cost or that potential is. It's enough for me to be concerned, and I appreciate the city of Jonesboro offering the money. Honestly, looking at it, I struggle with, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for any government entity, and especially one as small as the city of Jonesboro. I'm struggling with to see the value from that standpoint of Jonesboro giving up $170,000 for something that may or may not add seconds to a call. And that's something that you're never going to know until it actually happens, you know, and a lot of it is going to be timing of more than anything else, if that call is actually going to be, result in a faster transfer. Because it's going, it's still going to depend on where our deputies are at within that district. If that call happens to just come in, and our deputies are close to that, to Jonesboro in that district, they obviously will get there a little bit sooner. If we have something else going on, and emergency takes place in Jonesboro, and our deputies are someone, this is a large county, geographically it is a very large county. I don't, I don't see how we are helping the residents of Jonesboro in that capacity. I've always said I would feel a lot better, Jonesboro giving up that kind of money, if we can place a body within the city limits of Jonesboro. I think it makes all the sense in that capacity, but it's a lot of money for a smaller government to give up in this nature of not knowing if it's really going to have that large of an impact, and that's where I'm struggling with probably more than anything.
I can tell you, the more deputies you have out on the street, the quicker response time you're going to have. With our current staffing we have, obviously, Jonesboro doesn't play a part of our everyday patrol. So by adding additional deputies, that will increase response time. But you have to look at it in the bigger picture, not just emergency calls, you have to look at it day-to-day operations of what happens in a community, the burglaries, the thefts, the domestic violence calls, child molester calls, all those calls that we respond to, which we take reports for, those are the day-to-day operations of what we do. The, what we call the sexy part of police work, these things that you see on TV, those aren't day-to-day. We don't, thank the Lord, don't always have a murder every day in Grant County. But it's those day-to-day operations that we're talking about that they'll have coverage for. It'll be the police presence that's in Jonesboro, the deputy driving through, they're patrolling, people seeing that vehicle there that can deter crime from even occurring. So those are the benefits you're going to get, and not only do you get the benefits for Jonesboro, but there's also benefit for Grant County, because now we have an additional person that helps with those calls. We're not taking someone else from, you know, that normally doesn't work that area that we're not responding to, now we have an additional person that does. So it does help in that sense, and I think it's a benefit not only for Jonesboro, but a benefit for the county, because now, you know, instead of him being up by Abundale, we'll have another person on the shift that can be further south. And in the police work, time is of the essence, it's, things can turn ugly. I mean, I don't know how many of you have ever experienced being in a fight with an individual, and you're fighting for your life, and luckily for me, I worked at MPD, and our response time was a minute or two, and that still seemed like forever. Now, could you imagine working out in the county, and you're fighting for your life, and that one minute turns to two minutes, turns to 15 minutes? So for us, we're always going to advocate for police, because it makes us safer for our deputies. And my job as a sheriff is not only to protect the citizens of Grant County, my job as a sheriff, and I vow this to all the wives and the children and the moms and dads of our deputies, that I will do everything I can to make sure that our deputies come home every night, because that's the reality of our job. That's not, you know, when people are running away from gunfire, we're running towards it. When people are running away from danger, we're running towards it, and that's what we get paid to do, and that's what our team members are willing to do. And the more we have out there, you know, we'll get criticized for having three cars out on a traffic stop at night, but we do that because we want to go home at night. You know, I was out last week and pulled a car over, last Friday up on 18. You know, my kids are grown, but I got grandkids that I want to go home to, and so anything that I can do to make it safer, not for the citizens, of course, because it's always others before ourselves, I also want to make it safer for our team members, and I think that we should all want that. The last thing we want is to experience a thing other counties have experienced, and that's a line to do to death, and trust me, that can happen that quick. I know Mr. Middlesworth has been in issues when he worked up in the jail, things can go from good to bad quick. So that does, so not only does it help Jonesboro out, but it does help us out and help our deputies out to make sure that our team members are safe.
If I could, I'd like to respond to some of these points, and maybe, maybe this is helpful. I don't understand the concern about additional liability, because they're already going to be there, so if you're saying that these deputies are going to incur liability, this is just an issue of who's paying for it. They're going to be there, we're just, Jonesboro's asking to pay for them being there. If you're saying, well, maybe we'll be liable because somebody on the other side of the county's going to need them, that isn't hot water either, because there's going to be no merit to that kind of a suit. Can you imagine anybody suing because a deputy didn't get there quick enough, and the basis of that is because the deputy was helping another citizen? That's going to go about that far, even if they ever got to a trial on the merits, and plus, we're adding two deputies. It's not like we're spreading our resources thin. So I don't think that this concern about additional liability, I don't, I think is a red herring. I don't think there's any concern, really ought to be any concern about that at all. And then the point about Jonesboro's been here asking for a lot of money, I don't understand that either. We're not here asking for money, we're here asking to give money.
Mike, I'm just saying that, if you wanted me to respond to that, the ARP monies, the other additional monies for a house tearing down, there's been a lot of money that went that direction, and I'm just saying, how are they going to afford with their tax base to continue to do that if we're giving them money over the last 18 months? Quite a bit of money, actually. And then, is there that much crime in Jones- And then is there that much crime in Jonesboro that we need two more deputies? I mean, we getting back any 911 calls?
Within the last two years, there was a shooting within a block of my house. I'm a little concerned about crime in Jonesboro. But it's not just about me. We had a major drug bust there recently. Need I go on? Yeah. Well, I got a lot of community... And don't mistake my passion for anger of you, Mark. My passion is for my constituents and my community and my client. And then livestream comparison is no comparison at all. I was on the council when that came out. Livestream, to remind everybody, was here asking for money so that they could transport, basically taxi and bus service for people needing to get to doctor's appointments and things like that. See, that was a private entity. Jonesboro is a public entity, number one difference. Number two, that would have been adding an area of responsibility to government that we haven't ever had before. And my argument then against the livestream proposal was, we're already having trouble paying for the services we are mandated to provide. We can't take on more responsibilities yet. That's not the case here. We need to provide law enforcement services for Grant County, and we're part of Grant County. So I just offer those points to try to...
But that's fine. I appreciate your passion. But our last meeting, you actually agreed with the liability standpoint is, the arresting power relies on the deputy. If we entered this contract and the deputy goes into Jonesboro and it's a bad arrest or something happens and it comes down to the liability, the county faces the liability for that arrest or for that bad incident. The city of Jonesboro does not. And you agreed on that on our last meeting, that that was true.
And the counterpoint to that is, they're gonna be there anyway, doing it anyway. So it's no added concern. Anytime a police officer is doing his job, he is facing potential liability. I don't know. I'm the kid of a police officer, God rest his...
Me too, Mike. Me too.
Yeah. So you know.
I know 100%.
Yeah. So I don't think it's an added concern. It's always a concern, but it's not an added concern to militate against this proposal, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, it seems to have been brought up several times. And I even said, I don't know what that answer is and I don't know what that expense or that exposure is. We don't have an answer to that yet.
And I've been thinking about it since we discussed that. And that's my thinking after mulling it around.
So the hiring of two deputies, would it put somebody on the night shift, 365 days? Or 365 nights a year?
Obviously, there'll be vacation times and things of that nature. With the two views, we work 12-hour shifts. On night shift, we have two crews that work opposite days. So that would put... What we would do with the two positions, we'd make sure each crew had one of those deputies so that it's covered consistently. And even when they're off, obviously, we'd make sure that we still have someone patrolling those areas. But yeah, it's, you know, the last meeting, I think it was, that we had, it's funny because I was working the road that night and after the meeting, and we had a couple of calls in Jonesboro. And the call volume isn't super high in Jonesboro. And I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that it's what we would consider a high crime area. But I can tell you that police presence, in my opinion, in my 30 years of doing this, I think with police presence, it minimizes crime. I think people are less likely to commit crime if police are present. So it helps out in that sense. And it also helps out Jonesboro in the sense of, you know, we do have a lot to offer at the Grant County Sheriff's Department. You know, we have a detective division that would help work that... And we do it now anyhow, molest cases, any major crime that occurs there now. Because their officers don't have the experience that we do working child molester or rapes or homicides. So we get called out to do it. And we'll continue to do that. This just is a way that they pay us back or pay the county back. And I think it's important. I mean, I think what we should all take away from this, whether it passes or not, is that, you know, we have to find a way as a county, with the limited resources that we have, to collaborate with other entities. Right now, I had our training, a captain contacting MPD and contacting Gas City and the other agencies to see what we could do, even with small things, as far as ammunition for training and things. If we buy them in bigger bulk, can we get a better deal on it? So I had to contact them to try to make arrangements with them. Can we order all this together? You know, we currently have a successful gene team that's a multi-agency task force that's doing a great job against drugs. So I think as time goes on and our resources within the counties, if they continue to go down with our population, we're gonna have to find ways to collaborate with other entities because we're not gonna be able to afford for each agency to have their own different things. So we've offered and we've worked with Marion to use some of our equipment because we know everybody's hurting for money. Our tax base has decreased. We're not, we don't have Hamilton County's tax base or some of the other richer counties. So I think, you know, I do like the fact that we're talking about it, we're trying to come up with new ideas, trying to think outside the box of how can we provide the best service to the citizens? Because I know that you guys have the county's best interests at heart, just like we do. So now we just have to collaborate together and what can we do? And like I said earlier, we're one county with three cities and seven towns. And, you know, a strong Jonesboro makes for a strong Grant County. A strong Marion makes for a strong Grant County. Look what Gas City's doing. Makes for a strong Grant County. But a strong, strong Grant County, a strong and successful Grant County makes for a strong and successful city or town. So that's what we're looking at doing. So let's collaborate, let's come together, let's pull our resources together because everybody sometimes has to do more with less. And that's what we're trying to do. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are at least considering it. And I hope that you, if there's any questions, other questions I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Sheriff, in your opinion, if, I'm assuming part of the issue would not be able to hire, is probably pay. It's probably a...
Well, I wouldn't say just pay. Part of the issue is the pool of applicants have come way down. When I applied in '94 for Marion Police Department, I think you've said this before, the cafeteria at Marion High School was full of applicants. Now we're lucky to get six applicants, even for our department. We're blessed in the fact that we have a jail that's kind of a feeder system that guys and gals I wanna go along for them that we can pull from. But that's the issue. You're having a lot of different agencies competing for a smaller pool of applicants. State police are starting their trooper... In fact, I'm getting ready to lose one of our jail staff to state police because they're starting them off at 70,000. We're blessed here at the sheriff's office that if you were to pass this today, I could have to hire tomorrow. Because we have people that wanna work here. We can't say that for every county agency. I think Swayze went a year without having a town marshal, and we had to cover that area for the whole year until they were able to hire someone. So the issue isn't just pay. It's, I think, the pool of applicants or the number of applicants that we have that agencies have to choose from. And of course, there are those that are gonna go to the places that are paying more.
It seems that Jonesboro at least matches what we're paying or more, that they would be able to generate the applicants that they need. Do you not think so?
Well, you know, young officers wanna work in an agency where there's action and activity. You know, as a retired guy, hadn't go work in a small community, I'd love that, right? I've had my fair share of car chases, fights and all those things. But that's not what young guys are looking for. They're looking for places, you know, that some people are willing to do with less money or a little less money, obviously not a whole lot less, for places where they're gonna be able to police. I feel like, you gotta remember, we're, I don't wanna say a rare breed, but we somewhat are. It's, we do it because we really wanna serve people and we really want to keep our community safe. We don't do it necessarily for the money. I could have done a lot of other things as a young man coming out of the military to make more money. But it's a servant's heart. It's a hard to serve people. It's a hard to serve your community. It's a hard to make your community a safer place for your family and for other families. And that's why people do it. So money does play a part of it, but it's not the only.
So if there are major purchases to be made, so cars or anything like that, are we purchasing those cars or is Jonesboro purchasing those cars?
Well, right now, they have, I think, a couple of vehicles. And the mayor has three vehicles that they could throw our way.
Do you think they're gonna put deputies in those vehicles?
Yeah, we put deputies in them. If they're older vehicles, we trade them in for a newer one, but we could put our deputies in them. So there are...
We have a single patrol vehicle that has that kind of age, do we?
Yeah, well, no, we do. We have several that... We went a couple of years for some reason without purchasing vehicles. So we're just trying to play catch-up. I think this year, we're getting, or this year, we bought five. They just came in. And next year, I think with the ARPA money, we're getting another five. So that's gonna kinda catch us up where we need to be. A vehicle won't be an issue for us. We can absorb two new officers or two new deputies with what we currently have. And I do, and I know from talking to you on the phone recently, the concern of other agents or other agencies requesting the same thing, we would have to look at things differently then because there's only so much we can absorb with what we currently have. So if other towns were wanting to come onboard, we'd have to... It wouldn't be at one size fits all. We'd have to look at each request individually to see what we can do.
Yeah. And this isn't an isolated exercise at this point because it has the potential... You mentioned earlier about the bigger picture. And as a body, as a council body, that is our responsibility to see that bigger picture and what our response is going to be should another city or town want to come onboard and do the exact same thing. And if we purchase two vehicles for Jonesboro, we might be able to absorb that. But it's the unknown. It's still the same thing with our budgeting. Sometimes we have to look at that crystal ball and try to figure things out. We don't know some of the things in front of us. But what have we need to be prepared for the fact of Fairmount or Swayze or Sweetser or whoever else would come to us? And now all of a sudden, this starts ballooning into something much larger than what it is, how are we gonna be prepared to be able to absorb that? It could easily go from two police cars to five to maybe 10. And how, you know, where's those funds going to come from?
Well, Jonesboro has three vehicles that they're gonna give to us. That wouldn't be an issue with them. But it could be an issue with other municipalities or towns requesting the same services. So that is something that we'd have to sit down and look at. But what we have to remember is the sheriff's office is the only constitutional law enforcement in the state constitution. So we're required to provide the services to the county. And we're gonna do that. And how that looks like, I mean, it's something we'd have to sit down and come up with a plan in case those things, those requests are made. And it's something I'm willing to do to sit down with maybe a committee of council members and the Grand County Commissioners, sit down and figure out, hey, what can we do or what's this gonna look like if this happens? Because you're right, I think it may be something that we may run into later on. And this isn't unique to Grant County. This has been happening in other counties where smaller towns are requesting assistance from their county. So I think you're right. I think it's something we're gonna have to sit down and start really looking at it in details, what's that gonna look like if those requests do start coming forward?
Is it the Marines? That they're part of their motto is adapt and overcome?
Those are Army, so I can't tell what the Marines were...
Sorry, Army. Love you too. But if other communities come forward, we may have to adapt and overcome those problems. But I think this is an experiment for... Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the members? While I allow the mayor, do you have any input you'd like to add? I'll give you a few minutes.
I'd like to add that this is not the only group. I didn't come up with this myself. Other counties have done this. They're doing it right now. And I called them, it's been very successful. Thank you for your time. I approached him and he's, we talked about it in June and July. So that's kinda why I stopped looking for officers. So that's kinda my fault. But if I was working with the most prominent person in the county who was saying this is a good idea, why would I went anywhere else? So that's why I didn't look. As far as Jonesboro asking for money, yeah, we asked for 75,000 ARPA money, but we did give $5,000 to the area plan commission to tear down some of the buildings. So we're not just asking for a handout. We do have funds and we're working with the church or the school to tear that building down. I want you to know that Jonesboro has extended and taken over part of the county for paving and snow plowing, and not a small part. West Sixth Street over by the school, Winston Road, Ninth Street and Fourth Avenue to help out with the plowing and 450 South. Because it's overwhelming and we worked with Dave White. But as far as hiring officers, I just lost a part-time guy today or was it yesterday, Mike? Anyway, he went to Beagle County, starting out $70,000 with a car and a phone and all that. So excuse me, I'm under the weather a little bit too, as you can tell by my voice. So it's not like we're asking for a handout. I understand you have concerns and I would like to continue working with this. If you guys deny it tonight, I'd like to see a vote on it where I know where I stand and see how we can work on this. I'm willing to start out with one officer and look at it for six months and review it. If it doesn't work out, we'll stop. Because the one officer is a 12-hour shift. And the way that I'm gonna work with my police chief, we basically will have 24-hour, seven-day a week coverage if we can work it out. I'd like the two, but I'll take the one. But I'm not asking this to be like I'm not gonna do my job and I'm just laying around. But it offends me a little bit that you asked me to go with Gas City because why wouldn't they have the same concerns you have? So why is it always just a fix to go to Gas City? Well, that's not gonna happen. My office runs to Jonesboro, Grant County, and then to the State House. That's the way we work. And I love Gas City, don't take it the wrong way. But for you guys to say, well, just go to Gas City, well, that's kinda like not doing what we ask you to do or begging you to do, basically. So if you've got any more questions, I'm here to answer them. But I feel this is a good thing. I did talk to other mayors and sheriff departments about this before I approached him. And anyway, I think it's a good deal. Liability, that was a concern for me too, Mike, from my side. What would they do wrong? And the way I read the contract and the laws and everything, it's no different than any other law enforcement. It would be, it'd come more like what if, you know, what if this happened? It'd be the same if he was covering us without pay and, you know, or non-pay. So I mean, I appreciate your time. I know it's a big thing, but I think it's a good deal for everybody. I wanna be a partner with Grant County. I love working with you guys and everybody, but I just feel like I've been told it was a done deal a long time ago or was gonna work out with the union. And now I'm sitting up here saying, you know, why we can't do it. But we are a partner with you guys. Like, I think it's a big deal. We took over snow plowing and roadwork for Grant County. We took over a large amount. So we are a partner with you. And now I'm asking you to partner with the most prominent official in this county, and we should support him. So, questions?
I have one. So you have an expectation of a 12-hour shift, five, six, seven days a week? Is that what you just said, one officer for...
I'm not sure exactly how he'll work his shifts. We don't need coverage all the time. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna work my police chief on four 10s to cover, just to make sure it's all covered. In other words, work around what he's gonna do. And I don't schedule his days off around his schedule where his officers are. You know, in other words, if they're not gonna be there Friday and Saturday, my police chief's gonna work Friday and Saturday. And he may have to work some Sundays because I wanna work around what they're offering us. And as far as the vehicle's concerned, you guys both, all you guys know is that there is appropriations down the line to change your budget. If we need to help out pay for a police vehicle, we may be able to help out with a police vehicle. So it's not like we're gonna just sit back and say, hey, come up and drink coffee and sit around in Jonesboro up there. It's not gonna happen. These guys do a fine job. And I'm being a little selfish in this. If you can just understand that we have a very low crime rate, Mike, and that we don't need full-time coverage, but they do need full-time coverage for the county. And I just wanna be a player in that. And as far as, I got my border works guy back, or one of them. We've lost seven guys, five of them to Gas City in the last four or five years. And as far as the pay is, we can't pay the 70. But we can, because we were budgeted for four. If I can go back to the county and hire two at their pay, I can afford it because they're on those longer shifts. So we can make the puzzle fit. It's not like we're asking for a lot of money. We're offering to give you money. If it's about money, we might be able to give a little bit more. But that's something I'll have to work with the budget thing here. We have a budget of almost $300,000 and we've not been able to hire anybody. Jonesboro is only 1,600 people. I don't think I'd want to sit up there in a cop car all night at, you know, at Circle K. But I don't want this to be felt when I'm coming up here being loud because I'm not feeling real well. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate Dell and I appreciate if you would vote on it tonight to accept it. For a shorter term would be fine with me because I know it'll work. It's working everywhere else. If you feel like the liability is a problem, it's going to be there anyway. So I appreciate your vote and I'll be quiet now. Any other questions?
I appreciate you coming to it. I mean, honestly, from my standpoint as a county council member, I'd be like, bring me all, bring me all the money, right? But it still doesn't make any sense to me, it makes little sense to me, that Jonesboro would give up that much money, knowing just like what you just said, there's not always going to be somebody there all the time. You know, and so to me, like I said, it would be easy to be like, okay, I'll take your $170,000. Thanks for supporting the Grant County Sheriff's Department. But in my mind, if I'm a resident of the city of Jonesboro, I'm like, why are we giving up $170,000? You know, when we could keep that money and put it wherever, you know, wherever else with.
Well, I want, I want police protection. I want safety, public safety, not, you know. And if we got that money budgeted for the next four or five years, I think it's, it's just logical that you want to work with the county on this. And Mike, to be quite honest with you, you guys, or one of you two guys going to talk to Bill Ruff about this, is kind of undermining what I wanted to do because it did give you guys, now they're going, well, that's a good idea. Well, this is a better idea. This is Grant County. This is the broad picture. And I just want to be that little piece of that puzzle, stay in my own lane, support you guys as much as we can, not ask for any more money, and hopefully we can get some things done that are good for the county. I mean, I love this guy. He's great. You know, and he just, he just spits out the words that you want to hear and he's right about this. He is right about this. He's done his, we've met a few times, he's done his homework on this. And I just think it's a good move, but I would, I would suggest if you're concerned, lower the term. You know, if you're going to be on here for the next four years, I don't know what your terms are, lower to where you feel like you're going to be, you can keep your hooks in it for a while and make sure you feel comfortable about it. And there is, I think there's part of the clause, the contract says he can terminate it anytime he wants. So that's you guys telling him to terminate it. It's over. But I'm going to go back to Jonesboro tonight and be happy with our decision to make, but I'll be back again next week or next month and we'll try this again if not, because I'm still, I did get some advocates because I was remiss in my duties if I didn't. But they're not quality people. I got people out there that work for other departments that got fired, so I'm having a hard time. And if you don't mind, if one of you want to sit on my interview process, I'd be thrilled to let you sit in there. But anyway, thank you for your time. Thank you for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, audience. And like I said, I'd like to, but I'd like to see a vote, see where I stand, if you don't mind. Okay? Sound good?
Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Not entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we enter this partnership with Jonesboro to bring some tax dollars back to the county from Jonesboro and that we approve the salary amendment as presented, subject to agreement and approval by the union. Does that cover it, Mr. Futtip? Okay. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second, Mr. Connor, so that motion will die for the lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I would repeat the motion with the amendment to be one deputy rather than two.
Same motion with amendment of one deputy instead of two. Is there a second?
There was some discussion I wanted to have before you threw out the motion, so I can't, I can't say anything right now.
That motion's going to die for a lack of a second as well.
I've got one more. I'll make that motion with the amendment that we put a sundown provision in it, that it terminates in a year and then work out. Which I think we inherently have that power anyway, just cut the purse strings, pull them shut in a year if it doesn't work out. So make it an experimental program for a year.
That's with one deputy or?
One deputy. I'm trying to compromise, guys. Give me, give me a second.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Could you explain this again?
What part?
Just this motion, the sundown.
In other words, we try it for a year and a year only, and it's subject to being renewed again in another year if we want to continue it. Give it a shot for a year.
One deputy and that's an understanding that the union, sheriff and all that has to be cleared up.
Because the union needs, they need to understand because of our contract with them that we're going to add a deputy, but it's subject to the funding and it could go away. So if they say no, then that's a moot point.
Let me help. I think what Mr. Connor's suggesting is we have an addendum to the agreement between the commissioners, the council, the union and the sheriff, that if the position is not funded, that the union understands that position could be terminated. That would just be an addendum to the contract. I think that's what you're suggesting, is that correct?
That's a way of putting it, yes.
Exactly. Thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor with the addendum as well as the one deputy for one year as the sundown clause. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming, to approve the addendum to amend the salary ordinance, to put the sundown clause in for one year for a deputy that would serve within Jonesboro.
I mean, there's one more issue, that contract, the exhibit that talks about the transfer of the assets, that's probably going to have to be amended. So I'm assuming, Mr. Connor, that you will include in your motion that the subject to the contract being executed to, with the county in Jonesboro? Because if you recall, you only have one officer, there's probably no need for three cars, for example.
Yeah, good point, yeah. So.
Do we need to vote on that amendment then, or?
That is, that's really a second issue that no one's brought up yet, that this is a contract that Jonesboro and the county are entering into. And in that particular contract, there was an asset list that Jonesboro was going to forward to the county and that is probably going to need to be amended. It's really probably a technicality. I don't think that'll be a big issue, but just want to make sure everybody's aware of that also.
Well, pay would have to be reflected too.
Pay would, correct. Yeah, that would also have to change, which probably is covered by Mr. Connor's motion.
I think that is inherent in the motion because no one would send three cars for one deputy. A bit overkill, so.
So are we good to proceed with the motion on the floor in a second?
Yeah, assuming, I don't know if it's implicit in Mr. Connor's motion or if he wants to add to it.
Oh, so man, so it's clear?
That the contract between the county and the Jonesboro also needs to be approved.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Assuming Mr. Lemming's okay with second.
Be interpreted that way.
So we should vote on that amendment first, correct?
Oh, yes.
So the amendment to the motion is what we're going to take action on, which would be to include the amendment to the draft as far as cars and pay.
Correct.
Are there any other questions from the members?
We have to vote on my amendment, my own motion?
Yeah, I think that makes sense to do. You don't, you don't have to, but.
I think that's the way it is in Robert's rule.
That's the way it's been done, yes.
I'm just.
Stop it, Mike.
Is there any public input? If you want to add input, come to the podium and state your name and address and allow three minutes from the public. If not, roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. So the amendment is added. Now we'll vote on the motion. The motion is to approve the addendum to the contract to allow one salary ordinance amendment as far as the deputy goes. And is there anything else?
There's the, I'm in the salary ordinance for the one deputy, the addendum to the contract, and then verification that the contract between Jonesboro and the county gets executed.
And that the union contract's executed.
That was the second one.
Yeah, okay.
The sundowner, or the one-year trial or whatever.
One-year trial. Okay, we're all clear on the motion. Any public input? Roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Does that motion just carry?
Obligating council members to committee assignments or any, any extra work, but I think there's some policy issues that I think would make sense for us to clear up and get out of the way before this really starts collecting some steam ahead of us. But I think would be prudent to work on that policy so that we're prepared if it does come down. I would feel much better knowing that we have a document in front of us that's going to guide us through that instead of just trying to figure out haphazardly when it comes.
What we're missing.
And what we're missing. I almost feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here right now, a little bit. I trust, I trust Bobby. You know, and my vote is just a vote of confidence, not only Dell, but for Bobby as well. But I think for us as a body, I think it's proved that we work on a policy before this really comes our way.
And I'm willing to bring the extra time to help. Good point.
Anything else we need to clarify or everything you need?
I just asked the sheriff if he would give a union representative, verify whatever that process is, and then we can have an addendum ready to that contract.
Thank you, everybody.
That concludes item A. Item B, under old business, court referee discussion. Mr. Connor and the judges.
Mr. President, as you know, I have a special occasion that I need to go to. Sheriff, I may need your help in getting there quickly. I don't know yet. I might make it, but I am not leaving on behalf of any sour crepes or anything. I do have a very special occasion that I need to get to, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your understanding.
Yep.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Connor, if you want to go ahead and discuss the referee position, I know you.
Yes. And everyone can not be alarmed, even though it's me again. What I have is all in writing. I've got copies of this packet, which I think you've already got my committee report, but there's some email attachments. Judge McVicker, I sent him my proposed report, gave him a chance to weigh in, if he didn't make any changes. So there's some extra to add to that report. I've got some extra copies and I think Angie does as well, for any members in the public who would like to see this. It basically sets out, after I met with the judge, and Mike Small for probation, the total cost of the proposal, and it's just what was discussed before on the first page of my report. It sets out the cost of this for the referee, for a full-time staff member and for a full-time probation officer. Judge McVicker has stated it's going to take one to one and a half years to see if this is going to be a success. And success, I think the metric to measure that is going to be if it helps keep the jail population down, maybe staves off, they need to spend millions of dollars on a new jail. We'll see. And then Judge McVicker's email sets out more of his arguments to that. My recommendation to the council is, I just need to know what your pleasure is going forward. If you need more information, I'll get it for you. The committee can meet again. If you have enough now, if you want to make a motion, you can. If, I just need some guidance as your committee chairperson, where you want to go with this. And Judge McVicker asked, and we needed him here tonight. I told him not yet because he's spoken quite a bit verbally and in writing now. I think you know his position, but if you'd like for him to come back before this is considered further, I will pass that on to him. So that's my report. Just, I would hopefully get, like to get a sense from the council what your pleasure is, how you'd like me to proceed as your rep.
I know Judge Spencer had emailed me wanting to bring some data forward as far as to support the referee position. And I know he's here this evening, so I'll allow some time for him.
Thank you.
Support the request.
And Judge Ty is here as well. I've got some information that I can hand out. And I have a thicker thing with all the data attached to it. I'll just maybe can give it, make it part of the record and then I'll give you all the thinner ones that just sort of describes what it is we're talking about. And so I'd just like to, I watched the council meeting last month, actually kind of some alarm because I thought there was some misleading statements and some allegations and some impressions that were left because of that public meeting. Apparently I heard Mr. Connor talking about correspondence he received from somebody. So people are watching and left that with an unfavorable impression. So I want to make sure that the facts are straight. I feel like I've had, we've had as a judiciary, a straightforward relationship with the council. When you ask for information, we give it. We regularly give you information. We're transparent about what happens with the courts. And so I want to make sure that the record is correct because I think it's irresponsible to give inaccurate information to the public in a public meeting. First of all, I think there's a sort of an impression that was left after the last meeting that the reason we're in the jail overcrowding situation is that somebody's not doing their job. And so I think that's, that's not really a correct understanding of what the situation is. Really what we have is a math problem. So if you look at, on the first page, there's a chart of felony case filings in Grant County over the last 10 years between 2014 and 2023. And you can see that in 2014, there were 766 felonies filed. Now, what's the most common way that people get into Grant County jails? They have a felony that's filed against them. And so you'll notice that in 2023, there were 1,220 felony cases filed. In the first three quarters of 2024, and I've, this information was given with the data, we have, we've already had 1,012 felonies within the first three quarters. So we're on pace for a total of 1,350 felonies in 2024. If we reach that, and it looks like we might, that would be a 73% increase in felony filings since 2014. So in 2014, with 766 felonies filed, that's about three every weekday. In 2024, we've had about five felonies filed. In 2024, we've had about five felonies filed every weekday. In 2014, the average jail population was about 200, hovered around 274 inmates. I went back and looked at that data. We have 374 in custody today. 274 of them are in Grant County jail, and 100 are housed off-site. Now, that's a big number. 374 is a big number. But if you applied that 73% increase to the 274, the 2014 jail numbers, that would yield a census of 474 inmates. So as you can see, big increase in felony filings, not a corresponding, large increase in jail population, although it certainly is a big number, and the jail is certainly overcrowded. I'm not arguing that point. We've taken a lot of steps to limit the jail population, and that's why we haven't had a corresponding 73% increase in the jail census. And I think I've talked with you about our certified pre-trial program where we try to identify individuals who can safely be released without posting bond. We, there, sometimes cite, citing rather than arresting people with minor offenses occurs through law enforcement. Periodic review of the jail census for releases. We expedite placement of appropriate people in problem-solving courts. And we're currently working on revising our pre-trial procedures to try and speed up the resolution of cases as well. But we've noted historically that this problem of increasing filings was going to be a problem with jail capacity, and that's likely something that was going to stay around. So we have, I have personally recommended to the council during our state of the judiciary every year for the last many years, that there needed to be an increase in jail capacity, and we gave a recommendation of how to do it. So this shouldn't really take anyone by surprise if they were paying attention. At the last meeting, there was a misleading representations or understandings about really what the courts do. And so I wanted to share with you sort of what we do. We handle all types of cases, not just criminal cases. All four courts are courts of general jurisdiction. That means we handle cases that are both criminal and civil. And as we manage our dockets, we have to make room for both criminal and civil, civil cases, even though criminal cases often will take precedence. We have about 6,500 total cases that are filed every year, anywhere from small claims to murder. And so we have to have criminal days and civil days on our weekly dockets. Judge McVicker pointed out that Grant County courts are amongst the busiest in the state of Indiana. I've included in, in my data set here, the amended severity of need by county. This is something that's published by the states. We're number seven out of 92 counties in caseload per judge. Number seven out of 92 counties in caseload per judge. By those statistics, then, on five judicial officers are doing the work of over six judicial officers, full-time judicial officers. Now, I was dismayed and surprised to hear that there were statements made in the last public meeting about my work ethic. This is the first time in my public, in my times of, of employment that I've ever had to defend my work ethic, that I wanted to make those points as well. Circuit Court is one of the busiest courts in the state. I've attached the caseload statistics for every trial court in the state. And I'm number 26 out of 324 courts in caseload. What that means is only 25 courts in Indiana have a heavier caseload. I operate an adult drug court with a capacity of 70 participants, a veterans treatment court with a capacity of 10. Those are both currently essentially full with waiting lists. Despite that caseload, my cases are moved quickly. I've, I've included the circuit court's clearance rate for the last 180 days. You'll notice it's a 98% clearance rate. What that means is that as cases are coming in, an equivalent number of cases are, are going out. 100% would be one-to-one. I want to get up to 100% or, or greater. I continually work on that. I keep an eye on my clearance rate. At any given time, there's about 900 pending cases in my court. About two-thirds are felony, and, and the rest are largely civil cases. Statement was made in the last meeting that Circuit Court was not open on Fridays. It's completely untrue. It's ridiculous. Circuit Courts open five days a week. The Constitution requires that courts be open five days a week. Our courts open five days a week. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday are criminal days, and Tuesday and Friday are civil days. My calendar is available online at the Indiana Judiciary website. There's a site on that. Any citizen could go there, look at my docket every day of the week, 24/7, 365, and see what I'm doing. Apparently, the reason that, that individuals have concluded that work wasn't being done is because they apparently came and tried the door and found it locked on my courtroom periodically. There's a statement made about how often that happened. I haven't seen those individuals actually, so I, I don't know if that's a true statement or not. But I wanted to give you good reasons why a court might not, not have hearings or trials occurring at any given time. Mr. Connor and Mr. Glickfield can correct me if I'm wrong in any of these because they're familiar with how courts work. No court in the United States has hearings or trials all day, every day. And so there are reasons why, there are reasons why there might not be activity on a certain day in a courtroom schedule. One is that perhaps the case that were issued that was scheduled for that day was settled. Most things are, most cases settle prior to trial, so a hearing or trial became unnecessary. Another reason that I had a case scheduled or a hearing scheduled, and it was continued at the request of one or both of the parties. There are lots of reasons for continuance. Discovery's not complete, scheduling conflicts, newly discovered evidence, witnesses aren't available. So continuance has happened. Maybe the hearing slot wasn't requested by the Liddians. Friday, as I indicated, is a civil day. And so we schedule around attorney schedules. Attorneys don't always like to have hearings on Friday afternoons. Maybe I have a meeting on that day. I'm on several state-level boards and committees. I chair the State Pre-Trial Release Committee. I'm the vice president of the Indiana Judges Association, a member of the State Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council, a member of the State Bail Commission. Those meetings are usually in Indianapolis, or they're online. They take a half-day or a full day. Usually, they're scheduled on Fridays because they don't want to interfere with court's dockets, and that's least disruptive. Maybe I'm at a continuing education seminar, like last week. And I, I attend several of those a year. I teach and learn in them. We're required as judges to have more continuing education than lawyers in Indiana. Judges, particularly in general jurisdiction courts, have to keep up on all aspects of the law, both civil or criminal. What's another reason why the door might have been locked? Maybe you came in the lunch hour. All of our courts, like every court in the country, virtually are closed for lunch. So maybe you came in the lunch hour. Maybe I was on vacation. I'm allowed to take vacation as well. Now, sometimes when I'm out of town for meetings, conferences, or vacations, I do make arrangements for a senior judge. You can't always get a senior judge to, to do that because they're less than needed, and their availability for coverage is subject to their schedule. We're busy, so we use them as often as possible. So what happens then if that door is locked? First of all, why is the courtroom door locked? Two reasons. None of our employees' desks are in the courtroom. The courtroom is generally locked for security purposes, so that disgruntled people can't enter the courtroom and lie in wait. And then also, so people will check in prior to their hearings, and we know they're ready. If that courtroom is locked, does that mean that I'm not in my office working? No, it doesn't. A judge is a judge 24/7, 365. And we take call two months, each take call two months of the year. At any time, we can be called by law enforcement, the prosecutor's office, the hospital, Radiant Health, the VA, or the jail for search warrants, arrest warrants, EDOs, jail incidents. Judges that have problem-solving courts are often called after hours by their team for various reasons. Emails need responses on an emergency basis after hours. Orders are signed electronically now, and a lot of times, we're signing those on the weekend as well. We are, are, are judges 24/7, 365. When we are in the office, we need to draft opinions, orders, answer emails, sign orders, prepare for hearings or trials, do legal research, manage our budget in office, and answer questions from other people in the system. So my suggestion is, if y'all have a question about the operations, about my office, if hearings will occur, where the judge is, what's on our docket, come to my office. Ask me the question. Don't assume because the courtroom is locked that we aren't working. That's like, that's like assuming that because the jail is locked, the sheriff's department isn't working. So that, I'm, I'm a little bit, as you can tell, frustrated about the statements that were made. I think that, I'm wondering why some council members are checking up on judges. It's my understanding that, that the security door that was entered that has electronic record of us entering and leaving, that somebody has been checking those records as well. I don't understand what we're doing. Can somebody answer that question for me?
Judge, I can't because I wasn't the person doing it. I heard what was going on, but I have no idea.
You know, I heard the sheriff talk about the importance of collaboration in county government very eloquently. Sheriff doesn't just talk the talk. He walks the walk. I've enjoyed collaborating with him on a regular basis on a number of different things, and that's the way we get things done in county government. And when you have one branch of government playing gotcha with another branch of government, there's no way that you can generate trust so that you can collaborate and get things done. I can tell you my, the employees and staff of the courts know about this, and they're very concerned about it. And they're wondering why an elected official would make false statements in a public meeting and would be checking up on other elected officials. And so that affects employee morale as well. I've, I've worked in this job for 18 years, and I've enjoyed collaboration with many members of county government. We've got a lot done with not much in terms of resources. And I'm concerned that the loss of that collaboration and trust will result in us not being accomplished, able to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish. We've got big things that we're dealing with, and monkeying around and playing fifth-grade games is not the way to get them done. So that's my piece. Then I'm happy to discuss as well, I, I support the, the idea that, Judge McVicker brought to the table. And it is the result of collaboration and meetings amongst the, amongst the stakeholders in a creative suggestion on how to address a, a significant problem. Happy to answer questions about that. My, my caution would be that it's not going to work if you don't fund it appropriately and staff it appropriately. And so I would encourage you, if you are going down that road, to make sure you fund it and staff it appropriately. If not, if not willing to do that, don't do it. So.
I know Judge Todd as well had sent an email. Would you like for me to read that into the record, sir? Do you want me to address?
That would be nice. I appreciate that.
Do you want me to read it into the record?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Judge Spencer?
This is dated December the 18th. It says, gentlemen, during the Grant County Council meeting held on November the 20th, councilmen Polling made claims that Grant County Superior Court I is closed on Fridays, and that I don't work five days a week. While in certain respect, Mr. Polling's both claims are inaccurate. Objective and irrefutable evidence exists to demonstrate beyond a reasonable doubt that I do work a full work week. I will make my case below, and I've asked that you correct the record for the next council meeting. For more than 15 years, I have presided over the Grant County Reentry Court Program. And since its inception in 2008, reentry court hearings have been held every Friday at either 8:30 or 8:00 a.m. ending between 9:30 and 10:00 a.m. These hearings are open to the public, held on the record, and audio recordings are available for review. Should you desire to listen to them, we are proud of the reentry court program. And it was the first reentry court program in Indiana to be evaluated and certified for operation by the Supreme Court of Indiana. Over 200 participants have graduated from reentry court. We have three participants who will graduate on December 6th. I invite each of you to attend reentry court this Friday at 8:00 a.m. to witness for yourselves our efforts to reduce recidivism. Anyone who attends is welcome to stay and watch Grant County Mental Health Court, which will begin immediately after reentry court, as adjourned. Stay to witness provisional family law hearings, which we hold every Friday at 10:00 a.m., and stay for final divorce hearings, which begin at 11:15 a.m. As for Friday afternoons, we reserve that time for ongoing jury trials, emergency child custody hearings, and lengthy sentences. Lengthy sentence hearings. By design, we do not always hold hearings on Friday afternoons. Apparently, council members have come to the courthouse and found the courtrooms locked on Friday afternoons, and they were in the building. I'm sure that's true, but a court, a locked courtroom doesn't mean that I'm not working. When we don't have hearings, and after lunch on Fridays, you will find me in my chambers writing jury instructions for Monday afternoon trials, preparing for the 25- to 40-minute criminal hearings we do hold every Monday morning, or writing decisions for cases that have been under advisement. On days where council members were in the courthouse monitoring the activities of the judicial branch, no one ever stopped by my chambers to ask me questions or concerns. You're always welcome to do so. Now that you know the facts about Fridays, I ask you to correct the record by reading this statement. The public should be left, not left, with the impression that I only work four days a week. And it says, thank you for considering my response to the comments made at the November 20th public hearing.
Thank you, Judge. So is there any questions from the members regarding the referee position?
I, I would just like to echo some of the things that we've heard from the judges. And this may sound like blatant sacking up, but I don't care. I'm 64 years old, and I'm open up the eyes, spread my mind, as you can tell. And yeah, these folks control my fate and my job, but fact of the matter is, I've been practicing here since 1988. And in that time, I, I have many times said, bragged to lawyers in other counties how fortunate we are to have the quality of the judiciary that we have here, and that preceded the two of you. Grant County has been phenomenally lucky to have such good judges. I've been all over the state of Indiana in my practice, and it's not this good elsewhere. I also want to say that I've always found the judges here to be very responsive. Very, very, very few counties, can you go and get a ruling from the bench? In some counties, it takes years. You have a hearing, and years later, you get the results. Here, normally a few days, and we get orders after a hearing. That's phenomenal. That tells you somebody's working. One of the biggest complaints that lawyers and judges get is not being responsive. You know, I get compliments, thank God, in my practice, and I return calls, and I answer emails. These judges respond to that. And I'm glad that both judges mentioned that a locked courtroom doesn't mean they're not working. They are working. They, they are in chambers working. They talk to us in chambers. They consider their cases. They write their decisions in, in chambers. And they can do that from anywhere with a computer. So. So I know, because in my practice, I may not be in my office across the street, but I'm somewhere working most of the time. So I can attest that these judges are working. There's always one available. I've never had a problem finding a judge when needed, and just jiggling a door handle is not a test. That's a sophomoric way of testing whether or not a judge is working. Now, one thing I want to say, so it's not, you know, I'm not totally sucking up. Judge Spencer, I understand that they're being bothered by how the security doors may have been checked. I will agree with you, there's a way of asking questions that's good and promotes a good relationship and partnership between branches of government. Absolutely, I agree 100%. There's a good way of doing things, and there's a bad way of doing things. You've always had an open door, and I know you're always available to talk and answer questions. However, and please don't take this the wrong way, I do strongly believe that all public employees, including judges and their staff, need to be accountable for their time. So I know you're not irritated that people are asking you what you do.
I'm not issue with that at all.
Absolutely. In fact...
I just don't like it when people say untrue things about me.
Exactly, exactly. But what I'm saying, I would encourage you not to be bothered by people asking if you're working, but how they're doing it. It may not be the best way in the world to do it. If anything, I think you all are guilty of maybe telling us too much. You give us the annual state of the judiciary, and it's a lot of information. You do more than a good job keeping us informed. So anybody that says, you're not telling us what you're doing and not working is not informed. And I get this a lot. I think people complain about the council not doing certain things, but they don't come here to hear what we're doing. I get that. You know, Jonesboro gets that. People complain about Jonesboro, but the people complaining are not at the meetings to hear what's going on. So an informed public will know that you all are working. So I would just encourage you, if people are checking up on you, let it roll off your back some, because the truth will set you free.
Well, don't make untrue statements in a public meeting about my work ethic.
I hope you're not saying that to me, because I don't think I say anything.
No, I'm not. I'm saying that to the body, because that's what happened last meeting, and you know. The one thing that you have as a professional in this world is your reputation. And as an elected official, you know, your reputation is important as well, because you want the public to have trust in you. And so when people say untrue things about my work ethic and my reputation, I do get a little bit frustrated with that.
Understood.
And I apologize for that.
And well, and I'm not asking you to apologize, I just, I hope you understand. And I'd be irritated with them precisely what you're doing right now, if I were in your shoes.
Yeah, I agree as public servants, and we're never in a more transparent, we've never been in a more transparent position than today. You can go on, you can look at my docket, you can go on my case, you can look at what's happening in cases, you know, come on in and have a seat in the courtroom, you know, you can look up what the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court has said about my work product as well.
Everything you do is public.
Everything is public. And so that's part of the job, and I welcome that. But I want to make sure that the record is accurate, and there's not a misleading record for the public when we have a public meeting.
And I'm not defending that. The only thing I was talking about was the checking of the security doors. You know, I wouldn't have done it that way. If I wanted to know, you know, what you were doing, I would have come and asked you. I wouldn't be checking those logs. That's what I was focused on.
My question for that was, what are you trying to, not you, what is trying to be accomplished with that, I guess? What's the end game?
Don't blame me.
Come talk to me.
Don't blame me. Thank you.
I just have a completely against everything else that's going on here. So the cases are up by 73% over a 10-year period. We're talking about adding another court, possibility of Gas City closing a court, I don't know what's going to happen there. And understanding that we've given the prosecutors and the public defenders everything they've asked for the last two or three years, where are we headed? I mean, our community, you know, we have more crime here. Where are we really headed? Even if we build a new jail, we've built a bigger jail. I mean, I'm just, I know you're asking, you're looking at crystal ball, but honestly, what are your thoughts really about, I mean, recidivism, about...
And it is, you know, it's concerning. I think conventional wisdom is, well, we've kind of got a shrinking population in Grant County, so why wouldn't we see the numbers go down? The numbers are what the numbers are. And unfortunately, more people are committing crimes in our community than there were 10 years ago. And there's a number of different reasons for that. There's drugs, it's mental health, you know, it's a big part of our dockets that we're trying to address, but that's a huge problem, and we're not alone in doing that. In order for us to manage the jail population, being more efficient at getting cases, you know, at working through cases and getting them to resolution can help some. So part of the end game, and part of the suggestion, the idea with the referee position, was that that may help us to do that, and perhaps we could have more trials, things like that.
And to that point, the reason I'm bringing it up too, is we're here today, but we're talking, I understand this printout, we're one to one and a half years from even getting that done, right? And then we're probably another three years to getting a jail added on to or served or, I mean, so I guess I'm looking for, you know...
Well, I mean, I think that the referee position could happen pretty quickly, so it's two different things. If we wanted to request a court that was, or at least a judicial officer that was funded by the state, that's about a two-year process. And so obviously, if the county is wanting to fund a judicial officer, then that can happen much more quickly. There's a legislative process for the extra, for the state-funded judicial officer, and I can't guarantee that they would say yes to that. We're seven out of 92, so we've got a pretty good argument, but you know, who knows?
Okay. And so to Mr. Connor, what he's put out, and I'm assuming he's talked to the judges, so the dollars per person, you're looking at, I don't know, just glancing at, let's say $250, $250,000. Is that even close to what you were saying, if we're not going to fund it, don't do it? Is that even close to what you're thinking?
No, if that included probation officer, I think Scott had indicated that he would reallocate his personnel, so he would not need anybody additional. I think we'd need some clerk staff to staff it, not clerk, court reporter staff to staff it. So if that was all included in there, and I haven't seen, I'm sorry, I should have asked for Mike's...
I'm just thinking like, that's why I threw $250 out. I mean, it's ballpark, maybe 300, I don't know, but two...
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this would be, yeah.
Referee and a probation officer.
Right.
Okay.
And we did all kind of get together and discuss and say, what would we need as a, all those stakeholders did have a discussion about that. So this is, I think this is accurate.
So then, if you, Judge, forgive me, I don't want to stand it, but if we started it locally, then you would have, we would have the opportunity to try to get help from the state to get it funded that direction?
Well, so here, so in order to get a state-funded judicial officer, like I'm state-funded, Judge Todd's state-funded, the other two judges are state-funded, and magistrate is partially state-funded as well. I shouldn't complain. There has to be legislative action on that. And so you go through a committee, they evaluate whether you need it or not, whether there's support in the community for it. If you get through that committee, then it goes to legislation, and legislation is voted on, and then it's funded at that point. And that's just the judicial officer, you'd have to pay for the other court staff and things like that. So, but that's about a two-year process. And the thing to know about that is that if we do it and fund it here, they're not likely to grant it at the state level, because unless we took it away and then went and asked for it, because what they do is they'll factor that locally-funded referee into the calculus of how many judges do you have, right?
And I'm more into the whole math of things. I'm saying, if we're thinking we're going to lose one, I would sure like to have one started so that we at least try to stay balanced along the way to try to help with the situation.
Yeah, if Gas City court goes away, that's a whole different, you know...
Do we know yet what the IT costs are going to be? I put that in my report, there wasn't, I wasn't given that information.
I don't, you know, I think what you're talking about probably is a computer for the referee, you're talking about a big screen TV, I mean, it might be, and if we did it here, we can use some of this equipment, I think. So I don't think it would be substantial, and then you need recording equipment too, so the...
That might be, speaking as a council member now, a full council member, not just a member of the committee, that might be something we need, is a good, solid estimate anyway, of the technology, the equipment per software, whatever, that we would need to turn this room into the referee courtroom.
Yeah, I'm confident Marcus could probably do that.
I'm thinking good, sure.
We've actually got a recent grant for changing up some technology that's going to pay for it for the other courts, and so some of that information we may already be available. But yeah, you're primarily talking about the software that, for the court reporter to record the proceedings, a computer for the judge to use, and then if you need to do Zoom hearings and things like that, you know, some of the capabilities of doing that, and then amplification, which maybe that's, maybe we're equipped for that already in this...
Do you have an opinion what the metric would be for us to measure the success? Judge McVicker said a year and a half-ish, year, year and a half before we know. As laypeople, what metric might we see that says, aha, this is working? Is that going to be decreased jail populations?
I think jail census, we're not paying to house as many people in other counties, I think.
I'll offer an answer to that too, number of cases closed.
There you go. Yeah, number of cases closed, yeah.
I will tell you more than anything.
Number of Monday jury trials, too.
Yeah, the number of...
You know, we're getting through more cases.
Yep, that's excellent too, as well. So, yep, those are all great answers. And we have something called Odyssey Court Measures that we can look at our courts and see how we're doing in terms of, this is one of the things that I pulled out here, so you can see like how quickly you're closing your cases and things, so there would be a number of metrics.
Good, because I could see, kind of as you saw with the Jonesboro thing, maybe a set period of time that this would be, you know, almost like another sundown provision in a reasonable amount of time to give it a chance to prove itself. Would you be okay with that?
Well, I would say if it's not working, we shouldn't keep doing it. So yes, I mean, I think it's important that we measure performance and not keep doing things that are not working, so I would not have any issue with that.
I fear you may not be able to get a referee to take the job if they think it's only for 18 months. If they're practiced, that's my one concern. Fiscally, I totally agree.
Could that person maybe serve in another capacity as well, so that's not a, in other words, let's see, what's the status of our juvenile court magistrates right now? Solid?
He's full-time. Yeah, he's full-time.
This is set up as part-time. This is set up as part-time, so yes.
Right, yeah, I understand that. I'm trying to think if that person could wear another hat so they wouldn't have...
Correct.
Better attrition. I think they're precluded from doing that because of a rule on salaries. If you have two substantial salaries, you can't do both jobs at the same time.
Well, yeah, no, I'm saying for the same money, could they...
Private cases and also doing the referee. Oh, I thought you were talking about...
No, I wasn't actually. I was thinking like, could you have somebody who's, sorry if this sounds negative in the question, but who's the juvenile court magistrate and the referee? That's, you can't cross over those lines.
Well, juvenile magistrate's a full-time position, and so...
Yeah, that was just an example. Is there some other hat that the person could also, some other function that they could do so that if it's sundown, they wouldn't necessarily be gone, they could still have a job?
We could think about that.
Any other questions from the members?
I appreciate you both responding, not in the most positive outlook last month, but I do appreciate it, and I think that you are correct. We always have had working relationships, and I would like to think that we'll continue I think it's very discerning when you look and you see the number of cases in a 10-year period, you've almost doubled them. I mean, that's pretty incredible. I just wish there was clearer answers for all of us moving forward. I just don't feel like there are really a lot of inputs that change things.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I hear what you're saying, you know? How do we get to less crime? Yeah, and that's not an easy answer.
I do thank you, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the members? I got one more question, Judge. You know, this room's pretty busy throughout the day with different events or what have you. Is there any room at the courthouse that you could, due to scheduling, you can make this referee position within one of the courts?
There's really not at the courthouse. So we had, you know, we had kicked around, you know, where city court meets being one of the possibilities, so we'd kicked around, we even kicked around Gas City Court, where they met, being one of the possibilities too. The ideal thing about this is it's just right across the street from the courthouse, and so when attorneys come and have hearings here, then they can get over and have their hearings, because oftentimes what you run into is that a lawyer has to be in, you know, three different courts in a morning and has hearings scheduled for that. So they'd have to drive to Gas City or whatever, you know, then it's...
Would inmate transport also be a lot easier?
Inmate transport is a big factor as well, too, that we discussed, I think. So really, no place in the courthouse that, I mean, we're kind of busting at the seams at the courthouse at this point, so...
Thank you. So do we take any action on the referee position, or do you have what you need to meet as far as the committee?
No, I don't. That's my question. Do you, what other, I'm not going to meet again just to be meeting. What do you want me to do if we need to be, what information do you need?
I think you're right. I think we just got to make sure we get as much cost availability to us, because I think it's got to be something we consider.
Well, then I think the most efficient use of everybody's time is, let me just email Judge McVicker, and I'll copy the other judges as well, just keep in, all of you. If anybody wants to see my email, it's no problem. And just ask Judge McVicker to get an estimate from IT, because that's the one missing financial piece of the puzzle, I think. And my question to you, is there, the council, is there anything else you want for you to be able to either make a motion or consider a motion?
I think you're going to have to do it for two, two and a half years, because with the increase of felonies each year, it'll make it look like you're not gaining anything, and if you're treading water, you're gaining actually because of the numbers that we have in there. So you don't want to shorten it for a year and a half.
I kind of agree with that, too. I thought Judge McVicker was, you know, doing his best to be conservative, saying a year or a year and a half. That seems awfully optimistic to me as well.
It's going to take a good time to get caught, halfway caught up, and I don't know if you're going to...
But then the question is, what is the target that we never catch up with?
Well, as long as we're not getting farther behind, we're making progress.
But to Mr. Whitfield's point, by cases closed, we should start to see that, shouldn't we? Even if they improve nothing.
Well, as long as you've got more, as long as you're having more felonies each year, the increase, you know...
Your clearance rate has to be more than the final rate, and right now, it's not.
Yeah, it's kind of watching, seeing it before it starts to...
Even seeing it, I think. No, I'm personally in favor of the referee position in one position. I think we wait and see as far as the full-time probation officer, if it's really necessary. I would like to see a lot more people on probation. I think that in that referee position, probably needs to be more of, you know, thinking outside the box, a fee-driven avenue, if that's possible. My main concern is just where they're going to meet. I mean, I've been in this building for a few months now. This area here is taking every day for something. been in this building for a few months now. This area here is taken every day for something. And so while that sounds great, that, you know, it's going to be here and they can walk across the street, that's really going to hamper the availability of this area. And so I think that's the main concern of where, like I say, I'm in favor of the referee in at least one position. I think that IT will figure out the recording piece.
Do you have any room upstairs for a little courtroom? What were we doing? For a while we had some proceedings going on up there.
They were up on the sixth floor for a while. Judge Haas was in the basement for a while.
Yeah, the, where the weight room is now, in the basement, was a courtroom for a while.
Circle was in there one time.
I mean, it would be two years, you know, tying up this room. I mean, you'd have to plan for, you know, whatever it is.
This is several years ago. The room was occupied there as much as.
So that's where I'm at.
And there's nothing else to say on that that could be modified for a further meeting. Not yet, apparently.
Well, then what I would, if it's okay, I'll ask Judge McPicker to get us an IT breakdown ascending this room. And then maybe he could inquire if there's other space in this building. Because we had a courtroom in other parts of this building before, maybe that's an option now. I don't know. But how about if I ask those two questions, come back to the full council, and then see what the consensus is for your next move? Might be ripe for a motion then. Is that okay?
Just President Conner offered to comment more as a member of the public on two points. First of all, I agree with what Mr. Connor said. I traveled all over most of the northern part. And we have been blessed, at least for the last 20 years, with exceptional judges who definitely work hard. But the other side across the street's got to also understand that you gentlemen have limited resources that you can deal with. And I've been watching county government now for 30-plus years. And I've always said, you guys have the toughest job there is. And, you know, you have to tell people no. And it's not an easy thing to do. But we have a little bit of a reprieve, in my opinion, with the assessed valuation going up so much. It created some extra revenue. But at some point, policies are going to have to change within the criminal justice system, because the county, back in the 90s, when we first became commissioner, we did a study, about 70% of county tax dollars went to the criminal justice system. It would not surprise me if you're over 80% now, maybe 85%. So it absolutely requires a good relationship between the council and the criminal justice departments, because you guys are in charge of the purse rates. And some things are going to have to change in the way policies are administered here in the county. We can't keep doing the same thing, or it's, it's just going to collapse. The system is going to collapse. It's on the verge now. You know, I'm there every day, and I see what the judges have to deal with, and to a lesser extent, the attorneys have to deal with. And it's as bad now as it's ever been inside the criminal justice system. And I'm not sure what the answer is. I was hoping the referee position could solve some of those problems. And the second point I wanted to make is Gas City Court is going to be coming next month to talk to you. And just want to give you a heads up on some statistics. They have over 1,000 misdemeanors in Gas City Court that they process. And at most, I've been told 20% of those are cases inside Gas City. The rest of them are actually cases involved the rest of the county. And they have a very tight budget over there. They're going to be requesting that they're, they'll continue to fund what they fund, but there are shortfalls, about $90,000. They're going to be requesting that you cover that, and then they'll keep doing it. By the way, they have over 4,000 infractions. And I know you're not aware, but infractions, tickets, the clerical time to deal with those is substantial, because that paper call has to go to the B of B. And so it's just an enormous amount of responsibility that the Gas City Court currently has. So what Mayor Rock and Judge Barker are going to suggest, if that, if that, in their mind, shortfall, in other words, whatever they've budgeted to this point, and then the additional money that they have to put in, which is about $90,000, is not met, they are only going to accept for next year, they are only going to accept Gas City filings, in other words, cases that happen in Gas City. And then at '26, they'll start the procedure to close the court, which, you know, I personally, that would be catastrophic to the criminal justice system without basically adding a new, a new court at that time, because they cannot withstand 1,000 misdemeanor cases across the way and 4,000 infractions. So I just want to give everybody a heads up. I know President Middlesworth and Mr. Pollan will be commissioners at that point. And I've had these discussions with them. But for you gentlemen who are here, just give you some additional time to digest that.
Is he going to send a letter for that?
He didn't submit a letter.
Yeah, they had submitted one. And another interesting fact I saw, I didn't realize this, but back in the 90s, you know, when I was commissioner, we had these discussions. And someone had done a study, and I think out of approximately 375 warrants that were going to be served, at one point, only 20 of those were from Gas City. So they do a tremendous amount of work for the county over there. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the members?
Thank you. Point spot taken, David. I think the main way this could possibly not pass is the spirit being welling and the billfold being weak. I mean, it's, it's not cheap. But I like the fact that this is almost God's will here. We got back-to-back innovative thinking, outside-the-box proposals being made. And that's what we've got to do in this county and nationwide, really.
Very true.
Any other questions or comments from the members? If not, we do need to make a motion to give the auditor authority to make end-of-the-year adjustments with various accounts that could be affected. And that's something that we typically do every year. Is there a motion?
However you want to order it. I would so move.
Yeah, however you want to order it.
The typical year-end authority for the auditor to, however you want to.
Make adjustments to various accounts. Do they?
To cover it, Angie?
Yeah. Do you need a dollar amount, or just?
I do not need a dollar amount, because it's going to be all over the board.
I get a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the auditor to make various adjustments to all county funds of end-of-year end.
We still need to cover library, right?
Oh, yeah. We do have an appointment to make this evening for Marion Public Library. That's true, too. Take a roll call first.
Connor, yes, Lemming?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Yeah, thank you. We had three applicants request to serve as an appointment to Marion Public Library. The committee, nomination committee did meet. You want to?
Yes. We had, we had three very good applicants. Can we name their names or just give you the recommendation for who?
Either's fine.
We would recommend that applicant Megan Mathias be appointed as Marion Public Library Court Member.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor to, and a second from Mr. Lemming to appoint Megan Mathias to the Marion Public Library. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input?
Hello, Ryan Howell, 2909 South Francis Street in Marion, Indiana. And I was just wondering if the public libraries, I don't know how much we're spending on them, but are they obsolete? Because technology and easy access to information is so easy to obtain. And I know I've got three minutes. I'm not going to take too much time. And, you know, how much does it cost to run the libraries in Grant County? That's a way to save money. I know this is outside the box. But, and once it was a good idea to have libraries, but now with technology, I don't think it is. I mean, if you close the libraries, would it give more money to businesses, small businesses, money on expenses, permits, and licenses? And here's one thing I'll throw in there, too. I mean, Grant County's in between Indianapolis and Fort Wayne. If we can give businesses a break on licenses and permits and tax cuts, we turn this place into, say, Grand Central or something like that, because there's a lot of north and there's a lot of south. And then you've got Grant County. Thank you very much. And once again, libraries, I think, is old school. I think we need to move into a new era. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Any other public input? Roll call, please.
Connor, yes, Lemming?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Are there any committee reports, resolutions, general discussions for the members? Your next regular meeting will be Wednesday, January the 15th.
I guess I would, but you're missed. I didn't thank you for your service, Shane, as our president and a council member. I'm saying to Mr. Pollin, we might not always agree, but I genuinely appreciate serving with you. I think you're a good man, and the time you put into, people don't realize how much time, especially as the president you put in. I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept the president's position if it was too much work. So thank you very much, and best of luck to you in your new position as commissioner, and saying to Mr. Pollin.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to take a minute just to thank everyone for, you know, just allowing me to serve in this role for, I've been the president for six years. I've been on this council for 12 years. And, you know, I'm moving on to the commissioner's seat. And I plan to bring that same transparency and accountability to all forms of government. And we've seen a little bit about that tonight. We've done an excellent job at getting our employees' pay up. And now it's time to just start working at the commissioner level to make sure that, you know, we're following the employee handbook, and we're taking care of our employees and buildings and, you know, setting up Grant County for the future. And I'm looking forward to that role. And so I just want to thank, thank you for that and allow me to serve. So, yep, like I said, next meeting's Wednesday, January the 15th.
Would you allow to consider a comment?
Yeah, you can make a comment real quick. I didn't say a jern, but I'd hit my hammer.
I know. And I'm not going to be your boss. I'm just kind of a simple old guy. But as you were discussing earlier, I tend to hide on 11 under the new business. It struck a thought that I'd like to make a comment on. And that's to recognize that members of the council, new members coming on, other government officials, if you were not aware, the Marion Chronicle Tribune published a lead story, I think it was on Tuesday this week, that they are restricting their print editions to two days a week now.
Oh, yeah.
And you were talking about notice publication, and that's why number, item L could not be, was not on the, it wasn't published.
That's always going to get tougher.
But it makes, my thought is, there needs to perhaps be consideration of a longer lead time and more planning in advance for publishing notices of agenda items for not only council, commissioners, any, any of the government entities, for what that has worked, if that has not, maybe it's already been thought of. It's something that should be perhaps, you know, given a look at if it hasn't been. And the other thing, I think I heard Mr. Hicks say Salem Bank, in reference to a location for the referee's position.
There's maybe some of these other meetings that meet in here.
Well, that's, if that's still under the county control, that may be another alternative that could be considered. You know, there's a lot of space in the upper two floors that may, may be an opportunity. And thank you very much, Mr. Middlesworth, and thank you to Mr. Pollin for your service on the, on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.